Okay, looks like we are live. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. Debbie, we're going to call the meeting to order and note attendance. Can you confirm the board members that are online for me?
Can you see them?
Yeah, I see Janet and Jennifer.
Great. Can you get, Janet, can you hear me okay? Just doing a sound check here. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Jennifer reported that she could hear.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have nodded.
Yeah.
We're good? All right. Hey, Danielle's telling us we're good. So, let's go ahead and begin with flag salute. Flag is right up here to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We are going to start off here after the flag salute with our Board Superintendent Operating Agreement, and Erin has agreed to read it for us tonight.
All right. Under collaborative governance, members of the Board and the Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only make decisions only at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless authorized by Board vote. And under communication agreements, Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the Superintendent when questions, question arises, or a concern or complaint is voiced by staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the Superintendent or Board Chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the Superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. When a Board member and/or the Superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate.
Thank you. Next order of business is our consent agenda, which, at this point, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published on Board Book. Oh, I did skip the agenda review. Thank you. Next up is our agenda review. We have had a couple of minor tweaks, but largely, the agenda has remained as it was originally published on Board Book, and I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I would like to amend the agenda.
Jonathan, may I? Go ahead, Lori.
I hope I have, I wanted to amend the agenda to add a discussion topic.
Sure. What's that?
And that would be for Board Goals.
Board Goals?
Yes.
Can you?
Can you elaborate a little bit, Lori?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I think under our roles and responsibilities as a Board, Board Goals is one of those. It is a good step to take in order to center a Board and also to follow their own progress, if they are able to accomplish those or not. So, I think discussing that, it's the new year. It's January, and I think this is a good time to potentially talk about Board Goals and what that would look like for our Board in this district.
Okay.
Very good.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on Lori's request? Any questions? Any?
What's our current process for, for Goals?
Well, yeah, that's, so, so the Board Goals are established roughly along the lines of the Superintendent Goals, right? Sort of along the same timelines annually typically. And I assume what you're asking us to do is to revisit those tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And see if we need anything in the future, maybe some facilitation by OSBA for that, for the Board? I, that's why I'd like to introduce it.
Okay.
Again, to revisit our new year.
Okay. I don't have them, do you have them handy? I mean, I don't have them in front of me tonight, those Board Goals, so I'm just curious if you've got them handy, if you've got something prepared that you want to talk about?
No, I wanted to see how the rest of the Board felt and see if we needed to have more structure around it so we understood a little bit more what our charge is as a Board.
Okay.
And how that progresses and moves forward. It's rather broad, but at least it gives us some structure.
Okay.
In the year ahead, if that makes sense.
It does. It does.
When we review them, how are we progressing? That type of thing.
My recommendation, given the topic, is could we, I, I would prefer we talk about it at the work session later in the month, because I'll have a chance to have brought them up, be refreshed on them, et cetera, et cetera, whereas tonight, I'm not really, I'd have to bring them back up and refresh myself.
I can respect that, yes. That's fine.
So, that would be my personal preference.
Okay.
But it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I kind of agree with that.
I agree.
We don't have our current goals with us, we're not, we don't have the documents to see where we're at, where we're at. I guess I'm kind of for it. I guess I would, the current motion, I'm going to vote no on, but if someone wants to say, hey, let's talk about it at a Board meet, at a, at a work session, I'm for that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it's roughly where my head's at.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just, we're not prepared, so I don't think, I don't think that we should, I don't think it would be productive right now.
I'll concur with Tom.
Okay, thanks. Janet or Jennifer, I think one of you is starting to say something.
I feel the same as Tom.
Any other discussion before we call the vote?
Well, we could amend the motion.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. Can we do that?
So, so if, if I were to suggest, do we amend the motion to, to have Lori's discussion that she's proposed at our, your next work session or one shortly thereafter? I don't know if we've already established the agenda for that work session, but?
Yeah.
If that would be amendable?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, there's two ways we can go about it. We can either vote on the, this and have a new motion, or we can, technically, what we have to do is we have to have a motion to amend the motion and then a vote on the, I mean, like, it gets a little complicated, so.
Well, I, I would concur with Ms. Alenak that, and others have stated that they'd like to work and wait until work session, so they have more information in front of them, and I can appreciate that and go along with it.
Okay.
All right.
So, what we need, I think, is the easiest course of action, let's vote on the, the motion, it was moved and seconded, we need to do that.
Okay.
And regarding having it on an upcoming agenda, I've got that loud and clear, if we want to vote on it, we can, but either way, it'll happen, so. Debbie, would you go ahead and call the?
Jonathan?
I vote no for, to discuss it tonight.
Jennifer?
No.
Lori?
Uh, no.
Tom?
No.
Janet?
No.
Owen?
No.
Erin?
No. Okay, so motion fails, but I think we did come to consensus.
We did.
That we're going to bring this up either January, which is already pretty packed, but if, for some reason, we can't do it January, February, for sure. Okay?
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Perfect. All right. So then, back to the agenda review. Go ahead.
Right, I have one small request, and I'm happy to have it either up for, added to the agenda, or I can just bring it up when we talk about Board Communication later on in our discussion. And that is a, just a brief conversation about our protocols around our discussion that we had last month after public comment. Not substantively, not about the subject of that public comment, but the fact that we had that discussion, and just what is best practice, what is our protocol, and how do we want to move forward with that? Because I think that was a somewhat problematic decision we all had to make kind of at the last minute, and I just want to make sure we're all clear on, on what we're going to do moving forward. So, the conversation on that topic procedurally, either added to the agenda, or we can talk about it during Board Communication if that feels appropriate.
I, I'm fine with that being part of Board Communication, but I'm also fine if you'd like to add it as a, as a specific item to tonight's discussion. So, it's up to you, but I'm good either way, it'll get talked about either way.
So, there was, there was a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to second the motion.
Okay. So, moved and seconded to add a discussion item regarding the sort of proper approach to discussing things after a public comment. Is that what I'm hearing, Janet? Okay.
Correct.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on that request?
I guess I would say I'm happy to have that discussion either tonight or at a future meeting. But I prefer separate, having it as a separate item, because I just think things are easier to talk about when we parse them out like that.
Right. Okay.
I would appreciate discussing it tonight under Communications, because it's still fresh in our minds, and I think it would be appropriate under that topic.
So, but just to be clear, the, the motion was to have it as a separate topic, albeit they are interrelated.
Yeah, they are.
So. Anybody else? Okay, let's.
Jonathan?
I vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, motion passes. So, we will add that, let me look at the discussion items. Let's, let's add that right after 10B, so it'll become 10C.
Okay.
All right. And Debbie, can you update that for us so that it's live online? Thank you. All right, so with those modifications and the soon-to-be-added new 10C item, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as otherwise published. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, next up, we have our student reps.
Mr. Chairman, did we do the consent agenda?
Mrs. Consent Agenda.
Oh my gosh. All right. This is a rough night for me, guys. Hang on one sec. So, now, the consent agenda that I tried to push in, what seems like now, 10 minutes ago, was, is up, and I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer? Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, now I think it's safe. You guys are up.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Grace Hernandez, and I am the ASB President.
And I'm Bjorn Doms, I'm the Senior Class President, and we want to thank you so much for having us to talk about what's happening with our SHS extracurriculars.
All right, so, the Red Cross Club is coming up on their second blood drive of the year, second out of the third, or the three that they do. It'll be on January 19th. It will be their seventh blood drive during the pandemic, and they have collected more than 700 units of blood during that time. It's pretty impressive. And then their goal is to have 125 successful donations on the 19th.
And we also have Skills USA coming up, so one of our career and technical skills organization clubs allows students to show off their skills in a competitive environment. This year, we'll compete in firefighting, crime scene investigation, welding, fabrication team event, digital photography, computer programming, automotive, and construction events. We will compete at state, at the state competition at Camp Whiticomi in April, but are identifying our competitive events and registering students right now.
Los Arguilas, or the Eagles, if you will. The club participated in the 2021 Celebrate Families Holiday Festival's Tree Decorating Contest. They won second place and did a great job decorating. They received a $75 prize, and it'll go into their club account.
In addition to that, ASB has been working on multiple items, including our Winter Court and Semi Formal Dance. We are hoping to hold these events in late February, early March. SHS students also earned a cupcake for every student during our Tree of Giving fundraiser challenge. We are working with Mrs. Emmert and our Culinary Arts Class to make a cupcake for every student and staff member at SHS. We also have begun planning our Best Fox Ever fundraiser, raising money for medical teams international and secondary.
FBLA had their monthly meeting today and is starting their competition season with their Regional Skills Conference taking place Saturday, February 15th.
Our swim team has started off really great. They're working hard and they're getting better. The girls are 5-0 in their dual meets, and the boys are 4-1. Both the girls and boys teams both won the Rose City Invitational, but right before winter break, so.
The wrestling team went to the Rowley Lane Invitational Tournament last weekend in Idaho. Brash Anderson was a champion of the 220-pound weight class. This coming weekend, the wrestling team heads to Redmond for the Organ Wrestling Classic.
And, uh, girls, basketball's had a highly competitive preseason with a current record of 6-2, and they've started league play and have a big game on Thursday at West Albany. They're currently ranked number four in state, so they're doing great.
Boys' basketball is 3-0 in league with an overall record of 7-5. They competed at a tournament in Arizona over the winter break and went 1-2 against some really tough teams, and they are currently ranked fifth in state, which is really good, too.
And this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and we are so grateful that we have our amazing school board members here with us today, who have invested so much of their time and have given us great quality of education for all of our students.
We wanted to thank you so much for serving all of our students in our district and for working continuously to improve for the educational opportunities for everyone. We appreciate you and thank you for this opportunity to share what is happening in Go Foxes. So, we do actually have some little gifts for every one of you, so we're going to pass them out right now, but is there a way that we can get them to?
We can, yeah.
Okay.
Debbie, would you just take them, and we'll find a way to?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I am. I visualize. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, wow, this is great. Thank you. This is fantastic.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's just right.
It was a try.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have SFEA.
I'm Jessie, and I'm here this evening on behalf of SFEA.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I just wanted to give, on behalf of SFEA, a lot of appreciation to you guys. It is Board Member Appreciation Month. You guys fulfill a really important and impressive role, and we just want to, just let you know we appreciate what you're doing. It's a really hard role all the time, and especially now, we've had some pretty divisive times, and oftentimes, school boards kind of come under the pressure of, of opposing sides, and it's just a really big service you offer our community, so thank you for that. So, one of the highlights I just wanted to share tonight is just an, sort of our ongoing struggle of our workforce issue. You guys, I'm sure, are no strangers to hearing about staffing issues at schools. So, with that, we have just our ongoing workload issues. One of the main things that's been really troubling is our absences for students. So, we all know that there's a new variant that's been really wreaking havoc on people. And I would say, in my classes, just an estimate, in my classes on Friday and today, I was missing a third of the students. You know, some of that is quarantine, some of that is kids who are sick, actually sick, and then, of course, we have regular winter illnesses, too. So, but it is pretty, teaching your class, when you know a good portion of the kids are missing, it's difficult, because when they're gone, you know, it's not the same, they're not getting the same product, even if we're working extra hard to get it onto Canvas. And then, you also are going to try to direct them, and so there's some extra work that's going to happen, usually after hours, right? Like, they're going to have some questions, or they're going to need some help before or after school. So, it's a bummer when you're there, because you know they're missing out, and then it's also just, it's more work. So, that's been a hard thing, and we're hoping that improves. We were really hopeful that tests to stay would improve those numbers. So far, we really haven't seen that. I'm hoping this is a, something that's going to improve in a few weeks, but I think we were all really excited when we found out that kids would be able to test to stay, and just so far with where we're at, it hasn't shown us a lot of more kids in our classrooms. One of the things that's happening is that athletes, you know, because of the large amounts of time they spend on their practices and teams, if there is an infection on a team sport, they are really affected, because, you know, the 15-minute and 30-minute rules and stuff, just, they don't usually get to still participate. So, we're really short-staffed in addition, I kind of mentioned that before. So, a lot of teachers are still subbing on their prep periods, and, you know, everyone wants to make school the best experience possible, but it does take a toll. Usually, on our prep periods anyway, are, are grading, planning, running around, so when we lose that time, it does take a toll, usually ends up just meaning we're going to be doing more after-hours work. We still have no, I don't want to skip ahead to that really quick. I know one day last week at the high school, we were missing 20 staff. That was including certified and classified employees, so, but that's just, that's just kind of wanting to give you the picture of what it's been like. So, anyway. So, still no math teacher, so our math department is still working very, very hard, just trying to do the best they can to make the kids, it may be, it's not an equitable situation for the kids in that class, it's just, it's just not. The math teachers we do have are trying very hard to make it as good as possible. And we're still running Canvas, so that's our learning platform for online learning, and it's, it's pretty time-consuming. It's actually really cool in a way, because it's, it's a really nice way to organize things, but when you're planning for in-class and that at the same time, it's just, you know, at least an hour or two per different class section you teach per week at minimum. I think, did I hear a timer? Is that me? I thought I heard a timer. Okay. So, those are the things I wanted to touch on, and just kind of let you know, we're, we're kind of in the trenches right now, and hoping things get better, but it's been, it's been pretty rough. All right. Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that brings us to our first public comment. I'm going to read this statement that we read at the beginning of this section every month. "We're glad you are here and welcome you to address the Board at this time with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the Board Chair. If you are attending remotely, please either email Debbie, or you can put a request in the chat or raise your hand virtually on the chat feature." Zoom. "Before beginning your comment, please provide for the record your name, address, relationship to the district, and subject of your comment. In order to ensure equity among speakers, remarks are limited to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wish to appoint a representative, the comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the agenda that is specific to the discussion and action items of this meeting. Please be aware that the Board's role during public comment period is to listen. Rarely will members of the public receive an immediate response to their questions or comments. Finally, the Board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or Board members during the public comment period. Remember that we all model a way for our students. We ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Board's decorum policy." Thank you. Also, there seems to have been a little bit of confusion based on some emails that we received since the last meeting, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So, so one of the things that came up was this question of masking, and when the Board was going to vote to either remove or keep masking, and I just want to clarify, local control of this is a myth, right? This is not something that is up to the Board, it's not on our agenda tonight, and it's not on a future agenda at this point. It's not something we can actually take action on. So, there's really three primary reasons, and I'm going to summarize them quickly here. Number one, should we somehow vote to do that as a group, we would be forced to ask our Superintendent to basically risk losing his licensure in the state. That puts him in an untenable position, and he's a fantastic Superintendent, and so that's neither fair nor prudent to him. Plus, we'd be forced to then immediately start to look for a new Superintendent, because he'd almost unquestionably have to leave us, in which case, good luck to us. And so, we'd be distracted trying to figure that problem out. Number two, PACE, our insurer, has told us, "We will not be covered if we will fully violate state law." Now, some people don't think it's valid state law, but the courts are upholding it, so whether we think it is, is irrelevant. We're not going to be covered, and we would be subject to fines and litigation. Number three, even if you overlook both of those two major obstacles, should we undertake that type of issue, we would have an onslaught and an endless spin of complaints and litigation and grievances. There'd be violations, we'd have the press and media all over us, it would be a zoo. So, there's a lot of reasons why this is not realistic, and I just want to make that clear ahead of public comment. We are not planning to vote tonight on whether to remove masks. Okay. With that, I will open it up, and anybody here or online, feel free to come on up if you'd like to address the Board tonight.
That's funny. My name's Tara, and I live in Silverton, and actually, I'm here because of the reasons you were just talking about, so I want to speak to that. I would like to speak on the school's mask mandate policy. To me, this is an issue that is so much more than it seems. It is, in my opinion, 100% political, and it's not scientific, in my opinion, if you do the research. Viruses have been around since the beginning of time, and masks unfortunately do not prevent against a virus. If you wonder if that's true or not, you can read the side of the box. My question is, why would we risk our children's psychological and physical well-being when we know children have a 99.99% survival rate? In terms of children's psychological well-being, the suicide rate among our youth has surpassed youth COVID deaths. We have, we have, I have a close friend who struggled with this very thing last year until she pulled her child out of the public school. And when a child starts to question whether or not their life is worth living, I think we should really start thinking about if it's worth it. And I don't know if anyone's thought that way, but the CDC reports that one in four young adults contemplated suicide during the pandemic. The number of suicide attempts during the COVID-19 pandemic increased 31% among adolescents, especially among females, according to the Weekly Morbidity and Mortality Report released by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And if that's not enough, why would we force our children to wear masks when we know they are not getting the required amount of oxygen to their bodies? Why would we do this when we know it is affecting them physically, wearing masks for hours on end, leaving open sores on their face? To me, this is child abuse, and it needs to stop. What do you need to make this stop? Are you willing? especially among females, according to the Weekly Morbidity and Mortality Report released by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And if that's not enough, why would we force our children to wear masks when we know they are not getting the required amount of oxygen to their bodies? Why would we do this when we know it is affecting them physically, wearing masks for hours on end, leaving open sores on their face? To me, this is child abuse, and it needs to stop. What do you need to make this stop? Are you willing to take on child abuse lawsuits for this? Anyone who tries to tell you that masks work are either lying or ignorant. I think it is important to know that last summer, on August 11, 2021, Resolution Number 21R20 was passed, and where the Marion County Board of Commissioners opposed Governor Kate Brown's mask mandate for children attending schools, supporting local oversight for COVID-19 response. When I researched this, and I was there and it passed, what I didn't know at the time was that apparently each-
Thirty seconds.
Each school district has liability insurance at which legislature said schools would be shielded from if they complied, which you were referring to. Therefore, I would like to support the idea of making available a liability waiver for those parents who have a different set of beliefs and feel that masks are not for their families. You believe in diversity, let's see it. Government entities that make threats of massive fines and threats of removing teachers' licenses is demonstrative of how bullies rule. I would like to end with the-
Time.
With our Marion County Sheriff, Joe Cass, stated, and I quote, "My office is committed to encourage and our community members to make educated decisions to protect the health and safety of our residents and visitors in Marion County. This is something we can accomplish, not through mandates."
Ma'am, I'm going to have to catch up. I'm sorry. We're at time.
... in our diverse community. So I ask you to at least make it optional with a liability waiver on it.
Thank you. Anybody online seeking?
No.
Anybody else?
No hands raised.
Wish to address the board? Yep, come on in.
Can I pass something out to you guys?
Yeah, you may. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready? My name is Jennifer Jacobson-Bruce, and I live in Silverton. And thank you for having me. I, what was the question about? I'm a business owner here in Silverton. I just wanted to go over last month's, when you guys brought up the comment at the discussion at the end, and you guys were having a discussion about how do you ensure concerns as a community? And you guys were talking about doing a letter to ODE and to the lawmakers and as a board and giving feedback to our governor, government officials, but giving feedback from the parents and the community. And so I just wanted to, I wrote down some of your guys' comments, and, you know, you seemed like you all were in agreement that you all wanted to send something and that you guys were really willing to discuss sending a letter to ODE and to the governor and to government officials. And what I brought today was, I think it was Lori who said she'd like to see in future to prepare, would like to understand more what Scott understands and what the expectations are from ODE. And so what I brought is the, I gave it to you, but the E S S E R. And this is every, this is the funds, so to get your grant funding, this is what the stipulations that you guys have to, or that the schools have to abide by. So I thought it would give you more of an understanding. And they have to change every six months or give an update so they can get their funding. So really, the issue is the funding. You follow the money. That's what's going on here. So now we understand why you guys look at us with blank faces when we're talking and discussing about masks, because there's nothing that you guys can do because you need to follow the money. And so I'm just hoping that you will continue to push back and contact the ODE, contact our state officials and the governor. And someone said, I think it was Tom, that said last month that this isn't about the health of our kids. We've been pushing the fear, and it needs to be returned to the health of our kids. And, and someone said at the end of the last board meeting, I think Jennifer and Janet were talking about staying in our lane, and what does that look like?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. And, and what is our role? And the role of a school board is not for, to work. You're not working for the school staff. You're working for the community. We have voted you in. You're working for truly the kids. So I'm just trying to encourage you to remember that you're working for the kids. This all comes down to the kids. It's not the parents anymore. It's not anything else but the kids. And please write that letter to ODE.
Time. Thank you. Anybody online at this point? Nope.
Hi again. I, I want to add on to the students that were here and just say, since it is Thank the Board Month, that I really do appreciate all that you do. I know you don't get paid for this, and you're here because you really care, all of you too. So I want to thank you for that, regardless of whether we agree or disagree. I, I have a lot of things that I want to talk about, so hopefully I'll, I'll try to get in what I can get in. And first of all, I want to say why I'm here tonight, because my children are no longer in the schools. And why, why I'm here is for when I was a student way back when, I didn't have a, a good family support. And so I come tonight because I'm here for those kids that don't have a good family support and/or academic support, for whatever reason. And I just remember that when I came to school, the main reason I was there was because I wanted to be around my friends. And at the last school board meeting, when they talked about, when the students came up and talked about why they were so glad to be back in school, the number one answer was, "I get to be with my friends." Now, I'm saying that because there's some talk that's coming up that maybe the schools might close again and go to virtual, and I'm hoping that you will oppose that. Having said that, I also am here for those students that there's some inequity going on. And I know you have an equity policy. And the policy that I am finding with the vaccinated kids versus the unvaccinated kids is you are violating number five and number eight in your equity policy for upholding the principles of equity. And I, I can read those to you really quick. And why that is, is because it's my understanding, if this is still going on, if a student is exposed to somebody who has COVID, that if they're vaccinated and they have no symptoms, they can stay at the school. If they're not vaccinated, then they need to quarantine for five days. Now, I know that you have this new option where it's testing in, but that still only applies to those students that are unvaccinated, not to both types of students. And I think that's a little unfair. So I want to read number five and eight, so you understand a little bit fully what, what's happening in this school, where I think you're violating it. Okay. Number five is, "Hold one another mutually accountable for identifying and counteracting biased policies," which is a biased policy, "practices and programs that perpetuate achievement disparities and lead to disproportionate levels of student success," which is kind of like number eight. So what's happening is those unvacc students that need to quarantine for five days, whether they have symptoms or not, are not getting the same instruction. And therefore, probably a lot of those students aren't doing as well. So I don't think that's equitable. See if I can get to, and then back to that report that Jennifer talked about, I would like to see some transparency to see where the funds are being allocated.
Time.
Okay. I'll send you an email.
Yes, Barb.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll double-check again online, just to make sure I'm not leaving anybody out. Okay, anybody else?
Hi again. Thank you for all that you do. My name is Peggy Hart. I live in Silverton. Just to change the subject a little bit, but to refer to something that Tom said last time, that one of the speakers just referred to, that it occurred to me, might be just a couple of thoughts from the public. And that is in reference to his comment that masking and vaxing and those precautions were teaching fear rather than health. And it occurred to me that that's a useful thought, and I sympathize with people who fear the situation. I'm not sure I do. But the health is a topic that could be expanded into the curriculum and into the way, the culture of the school. And a good example was two months ago, when the principal brought the little video of the kids doing the role-playing about healthy conversations and healthy ways to talk with one another, even though you disagree with each other. And I just thought that there's healthy cultural relationships. There's healthy families. There's healthy conversations. There's healthy soils. There's healthy, it's a broad topic, and I think it is a health situation that we're in. It's strange. It's new. And maybe it's an opportunity to bring a direction to the culture of the schools that could be long-lasting and an opportunity that could be built from this situation we're in now. So thanks very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else? Come on.
My name is Mackay Bruce. I'm also right here in Silverton. I feel like, is this as good as you guys can do? I, I, my feeling is, an advocate for the ones that don't have voices. I don't have kids here. I've raised my three sons. Now I have the luxury of raising three more sons, but they don't go to school here. One goes to school online, one goes to school at Christian school. And my fear is, this is all going to disappear because more people are going to start pulling their kids out of school. You guys already have a whole void of missing students here, and I fear that more of that's going to come. So to me, I, I feel like this is an opportunity for you guys to embrace an opportu, or a chance to make something big happen here. And when I say that, you guys can make something big by going against the grain, doing something different, trying things differently, and putting the kids first in a way that no other schools are doing. You know, I mean, my thoughts are a little flustered here right now, but I, I, putting, putting your foot forward to, again, I, I just, I know, I, I had a great time going to school. I loved high school. I loved playing ball, going to school, hanging with friends. And now I feel like all these things are going to disappear because we're, we're not doing the best that we have the capabilities of doing when it comes to putting all these restrictions on these kids. Everybody knows how healthy kids are, you know? And, and putting masks on them and not letting them just be kids and smiling at each other. The most inexpensive medicine you can give somebody is a smile. Who doesn't like seeing a smile? Makes everybody feel really, really good. Or a frown, where you know somebody's upset and needs a pat on their back. All these things I think we're missing. And if we keep going this direction-
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I got that. I feel like we're, we're just going to miss all of that. You know, so I mean, this is an opportunity for you guys to, to be fearless and instill courage. And instead of fear, we, we need to instill courage and, you know, wash your hands. Don't come to school if you're sick. Very simple things like that. I just feel like you guys have an opportunity right now to just do something really, really good instead of just the non-stop doom and gloom that always comes up here, and you guys are probably sick and tired of hearing all the same old crap that you keep hearing, you know? That's all. I just had to be the voice. You guys all have great minds.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else? All right. We are going to move into our administrator and staff reports. And first up is our superintendent report.
Well, thanks, Jonathan. I appreciate it. I just wanted to update the board on a couple, a couple major topics that we're working on here as a school district, not the least of which is COVID-related items and our number-one focus in keeping kids in school. That has become our, our major focus. And what it's boiling down to right now is, do we have enough staff to supervise kids appropriately so they're safe? And so we, we are able to function 100% in person. We hope to continue that way. As Jesse Newton mentioned, we do have lots of staff absent on a daily basis. There was a day last week, there were 20 staff missing, absent from the high school from illness. Dan, myself, and Leslie were on lunch duty that day. I will tell you, my 25-year career was one of the smoothest lunch duties I have ever had with Silverton High School kids. They're just wonderful. But it's a huge concern. It's a major concern to us because the, the numbers keep growing. If you've seen the dashboard, and if you, you've paid attention to the data with Marion County, the infection rates are going up by the day. Whether we like it or not, people are getting sick. And when people are sick, they can't come to work. That's the major reality that we're facing right now. So just last week, we had between 9 and 12% absentee, and the fill rate was 62%. That's getting dangerously close to not being able to supervise kids safely. And so we're buckling down with our COVID protocols. We're still moving forward with having extracurricular activities. Some of the minor adjustments we've made is we've, we've canceled concessions, and we really need to make sure that masks are worn during games indoors. And the reason why that is so important, we want spectators to be able to watch their kids. That's really important. That's, that's a huge part of an extracurricular activity, is that it's a family event, and we want to make sure that we can do that. But we also know that we need to buckle down on our COVID protocols because our staff levels are getting dangerously low, and we don't have enough substitute teachers to fill those positions. That is a program, a problem across the state. Three years ago, we had 8,000 substitute teachers in the state of Oregon. Now we have 4,000. Nobody knows where the 4,000 subs went. They're just not in the system anymore. And so we just need to focus on the things that we can control at this point. And what we want to be able to control is having enough staff in our building so that we can carry on with in-person instruction. The last thing on earth I would ever want as a superintendent is to ever have to relive remote learning again, whether it's one day or whether it's, God forbid, a year. We want to make sure we never do that. We have major holes that kids have missed in their learning. It will take us years to catch up where we left off pre-pandemic, and we don't want to add to that. So my plea with the public would be, please help us. Please help us with the COVID protocols. Please, if you come to games, make sure that you're wearing your masks. We want you to be in the stands watching your children. The extracurriculars will continue, and we want to have spectators there to watch at the same time. The other thing that we're working on, by the way, the communication that- The other thing that we're working on, by the way, the communication that went out for, on Parent Square regarding updated COVID information from ODE and OHA is on our district website. It also went out to everyone via Parent Square. So, you've probably already seen that, but if anybody watching tonight or sees this on the recording, you know that you can go to our COVID webpage and see the information that has come out. The second thing that we're working on is the music work group. I want to make sure I followed up with the board on that. That's important. Music has been a major topic for a number of years in Silver Falls, and we're finally at a point where we can come to the table as a work group to try to figure out how we're going to address music education throughout our K-8 schools. We're pretty sure we're on the right track with our in-town schools, our two K-5 elementary schools, feeding into our middle school, which then go on here to Silverton High School. The challenge has always been to figure out the music opportunities in the K-8. So, we have a work group, it's 20 or so members, and made up predominantly of K-8 stakeholders. And we begin our first meeting, Leslie Roach is facilitating that work group. It will start this Wednesday. And I only have three non-negotiables for the work group. I will be there at every single meeting, but I want this to be the work group's idea, the work group's going to collaborate and give me a recommendation that I can then act on so we can begin allocating resources and things of that nature. The first one is sustainable. It has to be sustainable, which means there's no way that we can use federal ESER dollars or one-time allocations to solve the music education issue in Silver Falls. It won't work because most of the budget would have to go to paying for additional And not only that, but we, the money wouldn't go very far, and it's a one-time allocation. So, that's great for the first year, even if we could use the ESER funding or federal funding for teachers to teach more music. But what would happen the second year? So, we're bringing on teachers who are contracted with us here in Silver Falls, and then we're not able to fund that level of staffing for the following year. So, that would be unsustainable practice. The other is that it needs to be viable. It needs to be able to work with the different schedules and configurations of each K-8. It's not just that our schools are K-8, it's that they range dramatically in size. So, we have one K-8 of, I would say in the mid-60s, 63 students. And then we have ones as large as Butte Creek that are a couple hundred, Victor Point, a couple hundred. And so, it's not as easy as saying it's just a K-8 issue. Each one is different, and we have to make sure that we have a viable solution that hits all seven. So, if you think about an algebraic equation, it's got seven variables that we need to solve for. The third is it needs to be standards-based, and I think that's pretty obvious with our standards-based approach to teaching and learning. And we're addressing most of that with our focus on a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And those music standards have already been mapped. So, we have projection maps, K-12 for music education. So, that one, I know it will come as no surprise to the group also. So, sustainable, viable, and standards-based. The final recommendation, we'll need to pass that three-pronged test, and I hope to be able to bring you an update this spring with the recommendation. I'll be updating you along the way as well. Also, please understand that this isn't as simple as just spending more money. That's the point I wanted to make about the ESER funding. Lost my train of thought. If that were the case, we'd just hire more music teachers. But the problem is, we don't have the money to do that. We don't have a sustainable funding stream to be able to do that. And so, it's going to take a really high degree of creativity to figure this out. Now, staffing will be part of it. There will have to be some staffing allocated to be able to solve this issue, but that will only be a piece. And the other piece is, I don't have answers for it. It's going to have to be some creative thinking from the group. But please understand, because we can't use one-time allocations, which right now are coming in the form of ESER dollars, there's also Title I dollars, we can't use that either. We're not permitted to with those grant monies. And our enrollment is still down 10%. And so, we're talking about solving a very, very complicated issue that has really plagued this community for a long time. Music is a very passionate, passionate topic here in Silver Falls, and we want to make sure that we do our darndest to solve this complex situation. But when we're down 10%, that's $3.7 million. Now, we don't know what the funding ratio will be yet because, as far as I know, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have, we don't have the numbers to underst... districts haven't been reporting. How many kids have shown up?
The total state fund number, we don't know.
The total state fund number? And so, I just want to caution you as well that what this plan will look like is something that will be multifaceted and not just, not just subject to just adding more money to the issue. It'll be part of that. Can we solve it? I'm really hopeful, but we'll have to see what we come up with, and I'll be giving you updates along the way. The last thing I wanted to bring up tonight is around the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. We are wrapping up that process. It's been a three-year process that has spanned three superintendents and two architecture firms. Those that we've talked to, the consultants that we've been working with in this process this year, say that it's the longest and most comprehensive long-range facilities planning process that they've ever been a part of. You will receive the Long Range Facilities Master Plan Report tomorrow by the end of the day. Just the report is 99 pages. The report in total with all appendices is almost 730 pages. And all of the appendices right now are available on the website, our district website. So, you'll be getting the 99-page report. You'll have plenty of time to read that before the work session later this month where we will present that. The architecture firm, BLRB, that's been working with us on this project, will be here to present. And I will also have various members of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, some members, a few, to help with that presentation. And those individuals will be those that have really stuck it out the entire process. We do have a small group on the committee that have attended every single meeting. You know, you know most of them, and so, I will be asking several of them to say a few words as well. We really want to honor their work. This has been hours upon hours. This will be the 15th meeting that we're having next week to close out the process before bringing it to you as a presentation. You'll have until February 14th to look over everything and then vote to approve the master plan. Having said that, I'll take any questions you might have on those three topics: COVID, music, or long-range facilities planning, and otherwise, thank you for your time.
I have a few. Sure. Let's look at long range. You mentioned that there would be a group also coming. Have you reached out to those members, and do you roughly know how many will be in that group that has been members of that committee?
I don't know yet, Lori. I'm still, we're still in the planning process for that. And we still have the next meeting that we have on the 20th. But I'll know before the, before the work group meeting, and I'll let the board know.
Very good. Okay. The other question I had too, you mentioned that last week there were roughly, I think, 20, was it teachers that were absent?
That's correct.
I would imagine in any school district, depending on its size, that there's always going to be an ebb and flow of absences. What is the average as compared, we heard that there was 20, which just seems monumental. But what is the average usually for Silver Falls? Do we know, or is that, is it unusual to have five or seven maybe absent during a week as compared to the 20 or greater?
I would say that for a high school of 130 teachers, that that is, that is quite a bit.
Okay.
I can tell you, coming from being a principal of a very large school with a staff almost the same size...
Right.
That's a big number to fill.
Okay.
Especially when only 60% of those positions are filled. So, when Jesse was up here speaking to the board, I thought she did a really nice job of describing what it's like for a teacher who's here while 20 of their colleagues are out. It is truly, truly monumental, the amount of work that's put on the rest of the team.
I think, if I could piggyback on that, I think one of the things that, looking at some of the numbers that we're looking at, is, you know, normally, normally Mondays and Fridays have higher absentee rates, and this was actually an inverse of what we saw on, and I think it was the Wednesday that had the high absence. So, we, we had 10% out last Monday.
Okay.
On the Friday that week, we were down to 9%, but on that Wednesday of the week, we were at 13% of our absenteeism rate. And then, we're talking about the fill rate too, which, you know, is, is low because of the number of subs. So, you know, it's just having 13% of your staff out in the middle of the week is really unusual to see that number that high that way.
Yeah, I just, I have to say that for the last few months, we've been listening to SFVA, and it, I personally am just very concerned for them. I think we all are as a district as well with everything that's going on. But that is extremely distressing to know that there is that high of a percentage gone last week, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Lori. Thank you.
I had a question along the lines of the staffing for our subs. I know that's never an easy process and the pool of candidates just isn't there, but I don't know, Scott or Dan want to comment on, how are we doing with our recruiting efforts? Is our, do we have some that are, do we have a good number in the pipeline that are getting through the process? Because it's not an easy process to get through. It's, it's, there's a lot of vetting and which, which is, you know, there's legal requirements, there's background checks, there's all kinds of things that need to get done. Maybe if you could comment on how our pipeline's doing, or are we doing any other outside-the-box recruiting efforts to recruit more subs? If you had any comments on that.
Well, I think we're, you know, we're doing a lot of just individual. We think we get a little bit more bang for our buck when somebody gets asked by a friend or a colleague who's, you know, more impacted and, you know, and I think we get a good return rate there. But we did meet last week to kind of replicate what Kevin Palmer did with the busing to say, okay, so how can we, you know, we got a lot of return on our investment through those practices. So, Derek is replicating those to try to get the word out, to try to, again, do an extra effort of recruiting folks into that. And it is, and then from the HR department, we're trying to work more closely with our partners with the WSD because they're overwhelmed with different things to see, how can we hold the hands of our people that we're recruiting to try to get them through faster? And then we have our own internal process of recruiting subs through that emergency licensure program. So, and we get one or two a week, you know, new people to get to sub, and they will only sub in our district. But as you know, that process takes a little bit of time to get them through that. So, we're doing about everything we can, but I think we could do a better job in that three-pronged approach that Kevin tried with the busing that was successful, to try that approach with classified and licensed subs.
I'm glad you're there, because I was even coming to my mind, it's like, you know, you drive around town and there's, there's signs up all over about, you know, being a bus driver, and here's the benefits, and here's the starting wage, and just the, I've seen it at multiple spots around the area, and maybe that might be a great idea, just to get the awareness out to our public that we really need folks to, you know, if they have time, or if they have, you know, a desire to help with our kids, and, you know, maybe they're retired, or maybe they have a job that's flexible that they can do to help out, that would be a great way to get it out to the public to just kind of get visibility.
Well, I think the sense of urgency there is certainly important. I think that's why we were so successful with the bus recruitment process. It was, you know, if we don't get five more bus drivers, we might not be able to open. And then we got a swell, and I think there's a lot of people out there that if they thought that they were the person that keep, that kept our doors open, you know, and didn't have to go to remote learning, we would get some more recruitment there too. So, I think we need to create that sense of urgency out in the community.
Well, and I think too, just the awareness that, you know, that given the circumstances, you don't have to be a licensed teacher to apply. And I think maybe a lot of people may not be clear on that. And there's even, you know, waivers that if you have experience and don't have a bachelor's degree, you can get through it. So, I think just the awareness of those facts, maybe people will be like, oh, hey, you know, this is something I could do to help our community in a real desperate time of need.
Yeah. So, we are, we are processing applications for people that do not have a bachelor's degree to be, get emergency licensed sub. They would only sub in our district. And I think we have a pretty thorough process on our end of screening people through that process. They get an opportunity to work in one of our schools before we, we get their license. So, yes, we are processing people to get an emergency substitute license without a bachelor's degree.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions for Scott?
Jonathan, before moving on to the next part, I just wanted to make sure that I publicly thank Steve Nielsen and his team for the information that's going to be shared with the board during Steve's financial report. And he will share the conclusion of the audit that our district just completed. And if it was not for Steve and his team working so hard behind the scenes, keeping us on the, on the up and up in terms of our district's finances, I'm really, really thankful for, for that. And so, thank you, Steve. I just wanted to make sure I thanked Steve publicly for that.
Okay. Well, next up, we have an SIA update, and I think Leslie is going to give us that.
Yes, good evening. We are preparing to launch our annual Youth Truth survey at the end of this month. The survey opens January 31st, and the survey is for students in grades three through 12, all of our staff members, and all of our parents. And this feedback that we get from Youth Truth every year really helps us in a variety of ways, but especially with making adjustments to our student investment account plan. And so, just a reminder that our SIA plan has to focus on two items, meeting student mental and behavioral health needs, and increasing academic achievement for all students while also reducing disparities. And so, those are our two focuses in our plan, but we, we have a variety of things that we're doing this year, but we see, especially with COVID, areas that we need to make adjustments. So, we're really looking for feedback from our community, and I just really wanted to bring this to your attention and urge our community to respond to the survey for all of their students, and that our students and staff, their responses will also really help us provide adjustments in time with the needs that we currently have. And that's my update for today. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, well, Steve, you're up next.
Keep it straight, so I can keep eye contact, so. Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening. Hi, Janet and Jennifer. So, you do have a hard copy of the audit here that Debbie gave you this evening, but for, for those watching online, members of the public, this full 2020-21 audit report is published on Board Book, on PDF for you to reference, as well as a few supplements, and I'll go over all that. So, my purpose tonight is to provide a, kind of an executive summary of the audit, and we certainly can, can have some discussion and Q and A, but also because it's a lot to digest since last Wednesday, we can carve out some time at the board work session in January too, if you'd like, and obviously send some emails if you have any questions. So, let's get my stuff organized here. So, first and foremost, the district earned an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statement, which means that the auditors have issued a clean opinion with no reservations. Regarding state minimum standards as well as the audit on federal awards, there were no exceptions or issues requiring comment. Pages, when I refer to pages, in this... Pages, when I refer to pages in this presentation, I'm going to refer to the PDF pages. PDF pages don't quite align with the pages in the report that are in the online version and PDF. So PDF pages ninety-one and ninety-two is a nice chart to follow for the different tests that they do. That's specifically for the federal audit. The audit report has been submitted to the Oregon Department of Education, the Oregon Secretary of State, and the federal audit clearinghouse per federal and state law. So, per state law, the audit report is due within one hundred and eighty days from the close of the previous fiscal year. So it's always the first business day in January, in this case, January third. So, they require a hard copy edition, which they do accept in PDF format. That has become the new hard copy edition, both the Secretary of State and ODE, as well as the federal audit clearinghouse. And then we have to submit a data, a version straight from our accounting system through to the ODE. They call it the DBI Database Initiative, so they can break down our data even further. So just, I just want to give a brief tour of the actual statement with, by kind of by section, I won't go over every page, obviously, but probably the section I'd like to draw your attention to first and foremost is called the Management Discussion and Analysis, which by GASB standards is something that the district must write and submit to the auditors for inclusion in the report. Those are on PDF pages nine through fourteen, and they're numbered in the report by Roman numerals one through six. Unfortunately, the auditors, when they took that narrative and converted it from Microsoft Word to Adobe, some of the formatting was wrecked, and that's the way that they included it on our report. So because of that, I have included a separate link on Board Book just called MDNA, so it's a little bit cleaner to look at. But it's a summary of everything in the financial report, and I would say that the most important part to read, that would be most helpful for anyone to read, is on PDF pages thirteen and fourteen, and it's labeled Economic Factors and Next Year's Budget. If you were to look at one page of the report, just to get a real feel for last year, where we are now, and where we're heading, and why, this is the section that will tell you. And a lot of these things are items that we talk about every month, they're in the financial report and also in our finance work group. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The section, PDF pages eighteen through twenty-six, are our fund financial statements for all of our different funds, pretty straightforward and easy to look at. Pages thirteen through forty-two are called the Notes to the Basic Financial Statement. And I feel like this is the most educational section of the audit each year. There are some boilerplate things in there that you would see for every school district audit, but it's extremely educational. And then, most of that is related to the specifics of our financial statements. So, everything from accounting policies to state school funding basics, the basis for the presentation, cash and investments, a whole section on PERS and retirement liabilities. It's very extensive and very educational. Capital assets, risk management, long-term debt, and more. So that is a very extensive section, and is definitely worth fifteen or twenty minutes of your time. Page eighty-six is always very informational as well. It is the Schedule of Federal Awards, otherwise known as CIFA. So, it's a one-page summary of the federal funding sources. As you know, the state school fund is the predominant revenue source for our school district and most school districts in the state. But this is a summary of our federal funding sources, which obviously, usually we have the title and the National School Lunch, IDEA, but we also had, you know, the federal funding for ESER, three different federal stimulus packages that just started this year that go all the way through September thirtieth of 2024, as well as two FEMA claims that we've been working hard on. One for the ice storm in February, and one for COVID-19. So, that's two other federal funding sources, which are long, tedious processes. Lastly, page ninety-one and ninety-two, as I mentioned before, gives you an idea of the summary of the compliance matters. This is specifically related to the federal single audit that they do. There is an attachment also on Board Book. It's called the, it's not in your bound version, but it's called the ODE Revenue and Expense Summary. I always feel like this is extremely educational as well. This is the report that shows by fund. So there's, the first page deals with the revenue for every fund in one page, and then there's a single page for every fund, general funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, and internal service funds, by function and object. So it breaks down all of our instructional services and all of our support services by the different subcategories, by object. So it breaks it down by how much in each function goes to salary, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and capital expenditures. So, this, it's a lot of detail, but it's not hard to look at. So, I really feel like it's, it is educational for anyone that does a little bit of study on that. So I feel like that is, that's helpful as well. So just a few other highlights, that's the sectional breakdown, just some other highlights here. Our general fund, any fund balance ended at just under $2.8 million, which is an increase of $567,000, or twenty-five percent from where we were on June thirtieth, 2020. Now, we did expect that, and I did mention that throughout last year. I was hoping that we would end up at three million or more, but due to, you know, issues related to the pandemic, you know, there was money we saved, but there was also more money that we spent, the ice storm, other things, we ended up slightly below the three million. We knew that it would probably go up because we were in the fifty-one percent year of the two-year state biennial, state school fund allocation. This year, as you know, we've gone back to the forty-nine percent year at the start of the new biennium, which is one of the many factors that's going to cause our balance most likely to go down this year. So, we did increase it, but where we go in the future, there'll obviously be a topic of much discussion, not just from the forty-nine to fifty-one percent piece, but of course, the big issue, the ten percent enrollment decrease, which has not improved even since we've come back in person. So, the thing that we're still waiting on, which I mentioned last month, is the second period ADM is due this week. We've already submitted ours. By the way, there is an updated enrollment report for you as of January first in the on Board Book as well. By this time next month, we should have our updated state school fund estimate from ODE, which will finally give us the true picture of what the statewide enrollment is. The estimate that they put out in November did decrease statewide enrollment by thirteen thousand ADM, but that was based on updated estimates from school districts, and less than half the school districts provided updates. So this will be the first time we'll see, you know, how much other districts have lost. Certainly, most districts are down, and we just don't know how much. So, if that statewide number goes down further, the amount per student would go up. So, until we get that number, we don't know exactly what our revenue shortfall is, but either way, it will be a net decrease, not only this year, but into the future. So there's just a lot of moving pieces as you, you know, the audit's the audit, a lot of the things are the same, but, you know, we have a lot of these other factors involved that we didn't have, you know, a year and a half ago. The one thing I wanted to say too, is on that Schedule of Federal Awards, you will see on there the breakdown of the three ESER from three different stimulus funds. So, that is on there. So, over the three packages, the total, as I've mentioned before, is about $5.2 million. And ESER two can be used through September thirtieth, 2023, ESER three through September thirtieth, 2024. As you know, there's a lot of, you know, different allowable uses. ESER three became much more formalized, and there was a plan that had to be submitted, which is conditionally approved. As you know, it's on the website. Twenty percent must be used for learning loss, but we've also needed to use quite a bit of resources for PPE, extra cleaning. ESER one was pretty much used, that was the smallest amount, but that was used last year for our Canvas platform, Edge annuity, devices, and hotspots. There's also some allocation of each that goes to the charter schools for their proportion of ADM. So, there's a lot of good resources on the ODE website. I will do a more thorough ESER breakdown by each ESER program next month to show where those dollars have gone. Lastly, I just want to say, on the absence piece, I just wanted to clarify, so I think it was stated that we had a hundred and thirty teachers at the high school. I believe typically we're around fifty or fifty-five, and there's just over two hundred teachers in the school district total, and somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred, or probably less than that, total employees in the school district. I know last Wednesday or Thursday, we hit a peak of about seventy to eighty absences across all employee groups. So, that was where that thirteen or fourteen percent absence rate came into play, so that was across the district. We also know that may not, that that number does not include whatever absences they had at the charter schools, because that's not in our absence management system. And also, it may not account for any staff member that could possibly be having to isolate and maybe do work at home, and it was an absence that didn't need to be filled, per se, depending on the job they were doing. And also, not all absences, so if we had eighty absences, let's say, not all eighty absences would necessarily be from positions that had to be filled, but the ones that didn't need to be filled were barely filling over half of those. So, that's where we hit last Wednesday and Thursday of last week. And we did a comparison to October of 2021, and I don't remember the exact number, but I think we were close to doubling the rate of where we were at that time. Did I state that right? I just got off my head on this, so. So that's what I have for the audit presentation tonight. Certainly, if you have any questions right now, great, but this is an open-ended conversation. I also just want to thank the Fiscal Services staff for all their work. It's a long process. In fact, I just got an email from Kenny Allen, the lead auditor on our audit, and said, hey, Steve, how does the middle of February for interim audit testing for the 21-22 year? They come in the spring, late winter and spring, for testing of controls and systems, and then they come back in the fall for testing our books after they close. So, we just got done. Anyway, so, thank you very much.
I know, it's a lot of work. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
Anybody with any questions on the audit?
I just had one quick comment, Jonathan.
Yes?
Steve, and you and I have discussed this in our finance working group. Sorry, I'm getting feedback here. And that's our policy that requires a certain percentage reserve, and I believe it's, Steve, you can correct me, is it eight percent? Does that sound about right currently in policy? And, you know, we've talked a little bit about taking another look at that and making sure that that seems realistic, and possibly entertaining a target reserve percent, as well as a floor, that that may be a more realistic way to go about trying to have a healthy reserve while also recognizing that we may sometimes miss that goal. So, Steve, you're welcome to speak to that if you like. I just did want to make sure that the board knew that that was something we should probably think about talking about in the future, in the near future.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you too, though, for all your work and to your staff. It's a huge, a huge effort. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Janet, thank you. That's a great summary. We talked about that in our last finance work group meeting, which Jonathan is also in, and I think it's ten percent that's actually the policy, and that's something that we need to discuss about at the board level and in the policy work group as well, is just taking a look at that and maybe getting a little more comprehensive about that as well, in terms of, you know, if we're in a situation such as this, and maybe separating, you know, categories and contingency, rainy day, you know, et cetera, kind of like the state does, for example. I think ours is a little more, just, it's got to be, you know, it's ten percent, so. And just maybe for now, that there's an acknowledgement that we're going to have a hard time, you know, meeting that, so.
You know, when you're in a position that you'd like that, you know, you've got a solid recommendation, maybe? Let us know. We'll be happy to add it as a discussion item.
So is it my understanding that you would like to see it, it would be more comprehensive if we broke down the percentages a little bit?
Possibly. I've seen ones like that, I've seen policies like that, that it could be something to look at, or we, you know, it could be just a straight number that, you know, eight percent seems to be a little bit more of a standard number, and maybe it's eight percent, and we're not going to go below five, or, you know, that type of thing. I think there's a few different ways we can look at it.
Oh, okay.
Great.
That's great to know.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. That's going to move us into our discussion items. And first up, we have the Budget Committee vacancies. So if you guys recall, we opened this up twice, Debbie, I got this right, right? We opened it twice, and during that time, received a grand total of one applicant. We actually, just here at the beginning of the year, have received a couple of more, which technically came in after it was closed, but, you know, we'll gladly accept those applications. What we're going to do is we're going to open this back up to another one-month window. We're pretty sure we'll at least get one more. We need four, okay? Just to keep perspective here, we need four this year. And the reason for that is that we have three expiring members. One, Jacob Klotfelter, his term expires, Kurt Metzger's expires, and Peter Matzka. They all expire, and they need to be, you know, a new person appointed. We also had somebody move out in the middle of her term. So Nicole has left the district, moved out of the district. And so, we need to actually appoint somebody for the last year of her three-year term as well. So that's why we need four this year. So we're going to open this back up, and we are going to hopefully get at least one more. And presuming we do that, and presuming, I guess, that there's more than one more, we'll have a process put in place, like we have in years past, for appointing. I guess if we have exactly four, we may not need a whole lot of a process. So, any questions for me? Any discussion on the matter? Mostly just wanted to give you guys a heads up on where we were at with that.
So, we're hoping, we're hoping for at least one more.
Right, and I, you know, I kind of think we're likely to get another one. I've heard some rumblings that there's a few people that might be interested. So, I think we're going to get probably at least one more. My hunch is we'll get more than maybe even one more. And if that's the case, we'll have a process in place for selection, which will follow patterns that we've followed in the past.
Okay.
Any?
Jonathan, quick question. I don't disagree with that approach. I think that's a great idea, and I'm glad to be able to include those late arrivals that we just received. My question is whether the board needs to vote on that. You said we decided to open it up for another month. I just want to make sure we're following our proper process, and I don't know if the board needs to vote on extending that, or if that's something that you, as chair, are able to do, which is fine with me. I don't have a disagreement with that.
Yeah, I don't think we have to vote on it. We have, I mean, we have to, I think by law, have a budget committee. So I think we're kind of obliged. In the past, what we had done was we had discussed it and just reopened it. I don't even recall, did we vote? I don't think we even voted the last time we reopened it either.
I don't recall.
So, my hunch is we don't have to. If y'all would like to, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to open it back up, for clarity.
Would you, would you prefer that, Janet?
I, well, I'm not entirely sure. I can't remember what we were supposed to do. Jennifer, do you happen to have any recollections as to whether Jennifer, do you happen to have any recollections as to whether or not we vote?
I, I don't think we've voted in the past. I think this could be just a discussion item and then staff can read the tea leaves and make adjustments to the process. That's my best guess on that. I don't think we've, we've ever voted, but I could be wrong on that.
Okay.
I did, I did want to say one more thing, though. I think that we had a discussion about this in planning for the agenda and at that point we didn't have those straggler applications, which I shouldn't call them stragglers. I'm really grateful that we had more applications. But I think it's okay for board members to reach out to other people that they think would be a good fit. Like I haven't done that at this point because I just wanted to see who came to the process organically, but because we still need people, you know, I think it's, it's okay to mention that board members can reach out and use them recruiting.
Great. It's a great point.
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm fine to move ahead as we, just to go ahead and move forward with extending it. That's fine, fine with me.
Great. Okay. Board communication protocol. So this one came up as a result, and this is just an open discussion, right? But this came up as a result of some sort of ongoing questions about who should respond to emails that come into the board and in what order, et cetera, et cetera. So my attempt here is just to clarify my understanding, Scott's understanding, and I talked about this, right? So first and foremost, if an email comes in addressed to the superintendent with the board copied, Scott typically is the one that's going to take the initiative to respond to that. As board chair, I don't respond to those ones if it's addressed to the administration specifically or to Scott. If it comes to the board and Scott CC'd on it, then I would be the one that would take the initiative typically to respond. Now, in the past, what I had been doing was responding personally to that email and not copying the board. And the reason for that was fairly simple. I was trying to avoid creation of a scenario where somebody would accidentally reply to all and suddenly we have an email exchange between the board and a community member sort of constituting an online meeting, if you will.
Oh, I see.
So, so that was the reason for that. However, rightfully, I think a board member has said, well, I'd like to be able to see what you've said when that occurs. So what I've started to do is to respond with a BCC. Same, same plan, which is that we're not going to hopefully create this thread, but you'll all still be able to see my response, okay? So that's kind of where that's migrated slightly. It's just a slight change from what we were doing. Not all emails get a response. If the email is what I'll call generically in favor or against something, and we get lots of those types of emails, I don't respond to them all individually. If the, if the email has a specific concern or addresses a specific issue or has very specific information they're requesting, yeah, it's often we will. Or if perhaps there's some misunderstanding by the person, I may respond if for no other reason than to clarify that misunderstanding. And I guess the last thing I'll say, and then again, open this up to everybody else, is that if you guys as individual board members, you can respond to any email that comes in anytime you'd like. There's no restriction on a board member responding to an individual. Where the problem comes is if you're responding as part of a copy all or the whole board's involved, right? That's when we, the training that we've received over the last several years comes into play and we have to be really careful about that. So if you want to respond individually, you're all, every board member is entitled to do that. There's no restriction on those types of responses. Just be careful who you're copying so that we don't create this sort of virtual online meeting thing.
Right.
So that's my two cents on where we are. I wanted to give that as just a blanket update and then I want to open it up to conversation. Is there, if anybody has a difference of opinion, a concern about that approach? This is not etched in stone. This is simply what Scott and I have talked about and adopted as a preferred communication protocol.
Jonathan, if I could just add to the context, because I remember when we really started to get focused on this, the eight of us with the communication protocols was in late summer. I remember that because that's the only day off I've taken in the past two years and I was in the car trying to scratch it out and it was when the governor came through with the additional masking mandates, I think it was, and we wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with our communication, the eight of us. And so that's when we came up with that and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the board really sticking to that. And as Jonathan said, a board member brought up how to improve that process and I think that it's great that you're all talking about that tonight, but I wanted to give that for context too, because that really has paid dividends in terms of the clarity around the types of messaging that we've been giving and not creating different answers to questions or ambiguous answers that aren't factual, so.
Great. Good point. Anybody, I mean, again, open, open it up to conversation here.
Yeah, I'll just say I think the protocol is sound. I think it, you know, to your point, Jonathan, it keeps us, keeps us out of any procedural or policy hot water. You know, we, you're doing a great job as chair or in Scott when it's addressed to you, answering the many questions that we've gotten on various, many various topics over the last several months, at least since I've been on the board. So I think it's a great, I think it's a very sound, solid protocol, so.
Thanks. Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, Jennifer?
I think that the BCC is a great idea. I've done that in the past and I feared people thought I was weird, but I really think it's a nice safeguard in order to prevent an accidental meeting. So thank you for doing that. And also just thank you for responding to people in general. People might not realize how much work goes into that. And I did want to bring up the idea, because this happens sometimes, it's great when people email the full group plus Scott. Like that is, I think, what we'd say our preference would be is that people email all seven board members and Scott. Sometimes we get individual messages and I often respond to those, well, you know, have you messaged the entire board? Because we can only act as a board when we all have the same information. And so I will sometimes do that if it seems appropriate. And then sometimes I will, well, most of the time, forward it to both Jonathan and Scott if it's just to me, just to make sure that I'm not the only one who got that email. Because sometimes you don't know, you know, and you don't want to send a message to everybody saying, oh, did you get this? Did you get this? So I just send that, those singly to Scott and Jonathan.
That's a really good point, Jennifer. I'm glad you brought that up. It is true. Sometimes we'll get an email and the person sending it to us has BCC'd whoever else they've sent it to, because we'll all end up having got it, but we only think they sent it to us. And so sometimes that can also create confusion. I too want to piggyback on what Jennifer said. If an email comes to just the board and I respond, I always copy Scott. He always is aware of any, any communication that's going on between myself as chair this year and, and the individual. Janet?
And I just add one more thing to something you said before, Jonathan, was when, when we as individual board members respond personally to an email, I always think it's important to remember to identify it that way to, to the person you're addressing so they understand you're not speaking for the board.
Good point.
You know, you as board chair, when you respond, you are, because of your position, you're speaking collectively on behalf of the board. And so, you know, that's appropriate. For any one of us, it has, I think it has to be clearly put in there for the reader that, you know, this is my personal opinion. It's my personal response to you as an individual and not speaking on behalf of the board.
Yeah, really good clarification. Yeah, that's a good point. Other thoughts, comments or concerns? Does that help clarify kind of where we are, I hope, hopefully? Okay.
Yeah. Good to talk about it. Thank you.
I just have one kind of related reminder, I guess. And this is something that we haven't talked about with the, in, on the board with its current format, is the idea of taking notes during a meeting and those becoming public records. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that any notes that they take during the meeting can be requested.
Right.
And so that is something that you might think about. I tend not to write a lot of notes because I don't want to have to, you know, find them later, but that might not be everybody's style. So just a reminder that any note we take during a meeting is a public record that can be requested.
Yeah, it's a good reminder.
Yeah, and use, I mean, I think we all remember this or some of us remember it from, from earlier, from a few years ago, but, but refraining from using, say, your personal email accounts to email about board business, because then those become subject to public records as well. So just better to keep your communications to our official board platform.
Good reminders, yeah. Thank you. Okay, well, we added an item related to communication and/or, I think it really boiled down to the addition of the discussion item after public comment last month. So Janet, you know, would you like to give us maybe the summary of what you're hoping to talk about?
Yeah, so there were two items, I guess, obviously quite related. So one was adding an agenda item in the middle of the meeting, which, you know, so we struggled with that as well. We had a little bit of discussion around that. I think Jennifer may have brought it up that, wait a minute, we're sort of adding this kind of on the fly and that should have happened. And if I'm remembering incorrectly, Jennifer, sorry, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but, but that should have happened at the beginning when we did the agenda review. So that was one place that things, that things got a little hinky, that we were making those changes to the agenda in the middle. And then the other issue, which I felt was, was somewhat more problematic moving forward, was that it puts us in a position of cherry picking potentially which public comment periods we're going to follow up with the discussion on and which we aren't. And, and that sends a message that maybe some public comments are more important than others or that we, we value a discussion in some situations, but we don't value it in other situations. And that's a really difficult position to be put in. And I think, and probably just not best practice at all, which is why we generally don't have discussion after public comment. And so I think I just wanted to make sure that because we all voted to go ahead with it, that we weren't implicitly then acknowledging that this is what we're going to do moving forward. I think we voted for it understanding that it was a pretty critical subject that certain people really wanted to talk about. And from my own vote, I don't, I never like to shut down conversation. I never like to say no when my colleagues are saying, hey, this is important to me and I'd like to talk about it. My, my instinct is always to say absolutely. If it's, if it's an important topic, let's talk about it. But I think moving forward, we have to be very careful that we don't get in the habit of, of doing this because I think it's, it's going to get us into trouble. It's going to become problematic. And so those are just my concerns, that we make sure we stick to making those agenda modifications at the very beginning of the meeting and then decide what is our protocol going to be with regard to how we respond to public comment in a formal way potentially. Those are just some of the pitfalls and I just wanted to point out and I think we could have a conversation about how we feel.
Sure. I want to, I want to address them sort of separately. You're right, I think they're separate questions. The, my understanding is during, you know, our implementation of Robert's rules, anybody at any point in the meeting can make a motion and if it's seconded, that's going to open it up. And if people want to talk about it and it's moved and seconded, we're going to be able to talk about it. So I don't know that there's really any procedural problem with what occurred. We've tried to normalize it with having an agenda review, the one I forgot today, at the beginning of the meetings, right? That's been our attempt. But the normalization of it, I don't think precludes the ability midstream for a board member to make a motion to discuss something and to have it seconded. And once that occurs, we'll at a minimum talk about the fact that it's been moved and seconded. So that's my understanding. Anybody have a different understanding?
I, I feel that we have to be very cautious when it comes to a certain theme in any public comment that, and I think Janet used the word cherry picked, because then every public comment then can be up for an opportunity for us to respond. And I think we just have to be very cautious about how to proceed on that because nobody wants to be caught off guard and it, it puts the board into a very awkward, intense situation. And I'm not sure, I understand what you're saying, Jonathan, but I think we also have to be very respectful about how each of us as individuals and maybe our thought process could vary. And I just don't want it to be, well, consider some of the emails that we got in the last few weeks from what happened last week, last meeting. And now you had to clarify again to the audience and to us. So sometimes it can create tangles during our discussion and certainly when the agenda has already been approved, you're kind of prepared for that. And then to have that come up sort of, well, in my opinion, can kind of disrupt what was already planned and in place. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, valid thoughts too. I think to, to a great extent, you were kind of talking about Janet's second point, right? So, but, but yeah, absolutely valid thoughts. I want to make sure we address both of these two points, though. Jennifer, it looks like you've got something to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry, do you hear that feedback?
I'm not hearing it.
Oh, good. So I remember when you and I watched that webinar or participated in the webinar on discussing the meeting and the presenter actually said, you know, all agenda changes need to happen at the beginning. And so I took notes on that and that's what we talked about. And then Renee Fessler came in and said, oh, no, that's not right. She said that, and for those who don't know Renee, Renee used to do board development for OSBA. And so she, during a training, said you can, anybody can, can make a motion to amend the agenda at any time. So I think that that's just the way Robert's rules work. However, I, I would appreciate it if we weren't willy-nilly about adding agenda items for the, a lot of the reasons that Lori spoke to. I have, and you might have gathered this from the last meeting, I personally like it when we're really clear about our topic because then we can have a productive discussion. I feel like when the topic is too broad, there are satellite topics that are kind of happening and we don't land on an action at the end of the discussion. And so for me, having time to plan the agenda and get the, the topic right, I find really helpful. That's just my bias. So that, that's, you know, where I'm coming from in, in that regard. And I do like the idea of supporting no surprises by saving your agenda item until the end of the meeting or, you know, you can always talk to Scott or Jonathan about a, a future agenda item. Now, something may come up that's like super, super important and you need to go ahead and amend the agenda mid, mid meeting. Who knows? But anyway, those are, that's, that's my perspective and point of view. I'm not, it's not all set in stone, but that's just my thinking of at this moment in time.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I think what we have too in our procedures, you know, like when, when somebody makes some motion, as Lori did, as I, tonight and I did last week, you know, we have the, the motion and the second, a the motion and the second, a discussion, and then ultimately a vote. There is a check in the system. And, you know, so I think we have something, a vehicle by which we keep everybody on the rails, and that if, if a board member does bring up an item, it is seconded, a discussion, a small discussion on that, on that motion and second happens, and then it comes to the vote. If the vote goes down, even like it did tonight, you know, we have a check in the system. And at that point, you know, it's not, it's not discussed then, or it's, it's pushed for another agenda item. So I think the nice thing, we, we do have a check in the system to keep us on the rails, and that's, that's when we, as a board, vote. And I think it's, I like that we have the open system and, and the, kind of as Renee's from OSBA had directed, that any board member can make a motion to adjust or amend the item, or amend the agenda at any time. And I think that freedom needs to continue in our board. Now, what that does imply is implicit trust amongst the seven of us. And, and I, I like to think, you know, since, at least since I've been on the board in July, I think we all, seven of us, work really well together. And, and, you know, I have a high degree of trust with, with each one of you. And so if, if one of you brings up a, a discussion topic or something to amend the agenda, I want to respect that that's important to you, and, and I'm willing to, to consider that. Now, the motion may not carry, but I just want, I think it's important for us to have that freedom as board members to trust one another, that it's not just going to be willy-nilly every time, but it's going to be at a point in time. And I do think we have that trust.
Well, I, I think, I guess, an example happened tonight with something that I brought up. I felt that I brought it up when requested. And if I am not mistaken, some of the board members felt that they needed more time to reflect on it and say, what are our goals, and gather that information. I completely respect that. And so I think that was the other thing, too, if the agenda item, in my case, seemed rather broad, and many wanted to just catch up and get everything lined up. What are our goals? What does that look like? Do we need a facilitator? Can we do it on our own? It had many layers to it, which probably why it didn't carry. However, I think what happened in our last meeting had to do after the public comment in relationship, and I personally, as a board member, and I guess I'm going to speak on a personal level, that I understand that people come together and they're very passionate, and they share what they do in public comment, but I don't feel that it is always professional and proper to lean in so heartily that they are almost wanting the board to do something in that moment. And I think my line in the sand is when it starts to go against what the superintendent's having to do, and what he's trying to uphold in the district. I think as board members, we have to be very cautious of that. And so yet, I completely respect when people come forward and say they've had enough. I mean, it's been a long two years, folks, and it's, it seems like it's going to go on for a little bit longer, unfortunately. And there's just so many entities, too, and I think that was in relationship to what happened at the last meeting. There's so many different entities that school districts have to listen to, respect, and do the best they can to navigate through. And I, in a lot of ways, I just want to uphold what our superintendent is doing during this very, very difficult time. But it doesn't mean that I do not respect and, and I, I do hear the others when they, they have concerns about masks. So that's, that's the difference that I see. The trust element, it had to do more with, I think, what Ms. Alenex, you know, we've got to be careful about public comment and not just cherry picking and making an amendment to reply. We have to really reflect and digest the information given to us, I think, before we know where the board can find its role and responsibility in responding. That's all.
Thank you.
Jonathan, if I could chime in. I, I guess, I don't, I don't quite share the same feeling about the need to be as careful about what we discuss, sometimes in a, in a somewhat impromptu or a, you know, in a response type of fashion. You know, we have, all of our conversation, our deliberation needs to happen in a board meeting. And there are frequently going to be times that matters of significant, urgent public concern come to our attention at the board meeting. And the public needs to hear us have that conversation. They need to hear us have a preliminary conversation sometimes, and sometimes a follow-up conversation. Sometimes they need to hear that deliberation. A lot of times they do. And so I think I would want to agree with what you said earlier about, we do have a kind of a system of checks and balances there, where, you know, we have the prudence of everyone, once a motion's made to discuss something, that, you know, we, as a board, get to decide, and I think we need to be involved in some of those uncomfortable conversations. I think that's part of our job, frankly, to do that in a public setting for the benefit of the public, and for our own benefit. So I guess, to wrap that up, I would say, I, I think our system of checks and balances, the way that Robert's rules functions, I think to let that be our guide, and like has also been said, the, the respectful relationship between all of us and our superintendent, and I think we'll be just fine.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thanks, Owen.
Can I add on a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I can't see you. I, I don't disagree with any of that. I think my emphasis would be, though, on being prepared for those conversations. I don't disagree that we need to deliberate in public. I don't, I don't disagree that we need to be willing to have those difficult conversations. What, what I would like as a board member, the, the opportunity is to be able to prepare and, and be informed, so that what I present then as one of your colleagues in one of those discussions comes from a place of being informed and being prepared. That's my, that is my priority. That's, that's why I think that more often than not, if we have it as an agenda item, and we've had it, you know, ahead of time, and we've been able to review whatever materials or information we need, that deliberation's going to be much more productive. And, and certainly, if there's an action item associated with it, to Jennifer's point earlier, it's going to be a much more productive conversation than something that, that sort of comes up on the fly and that we're all just, you know, kind of punting on. So that's my preference, and that's, that's really what I would emphasize in that. But I don't disagree with your other, with your other points.
Jennifer, I see your hand, but I think Tom was ready to, to share something, so I'm going to let him weigh in, too.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Yeah, I, I share everyone's concerns, I especially, I understand the concerns about the slippery slope. But I think Owen said it really well, you know, it, it's an immediate public concern. I think the public deserved just to kind of hear us talk about it a bit. And I, and in our, in our statement that we read before public comment, it says, rarely will you get a, an immediate response. And I think that was one of the rare occasions, and I think we should just strive to keep it rare. But that's, I, I think the process is fine, and it was, there's, there's checks and balances there, and I, I don't see this board doing that very often at all. So, we hope, and I hope to keep it that way.
Yeah, good point.
So with the board, here we go. So Jennifer mentioned that we, we discussed it initially a while back about amendments or amending the agenda early, which we kind of agreed to. Now we're saying, are we going to then uphold what Renee Sessler discussed through OSBA? And it can be, because I, as a board member, was under the impression that we were no longer just having amendments.
No, I think we've always, I, I have at least never disallowed a motion mid-meeting, so I don't think that's a change. We just don't normally, we try to do it at the beginning. I think with all
Yeah, I understand.
...respect, if, if you know something is of interest already, bring it up at the beginning, not in the middle of some other conversation.
Right, right.
But in this particular case, you know, the item came up as a result, and by the way, public comment, I think, was part of, we'd also had, you know, a million emails, right? I mean, it was not just
Absolutely.
...public comment. And I think the other thing, at least for me, I'll, I'll speak just sort of personally here, it wasn't a new topic. This wasn't new. We actually had discussed the idea of sending a letter before, in a meeting, so it was sort of a revisiting of a topic. But you're right, it wasn't on the agenda that night, so we had added it then. So there's a, for me, there was a distinction, but maybe not.
Okay.
You know, anyway, Jennifer, I think you had your hand up earlier. You're muted?
Oh. Thank you. So I, I wanted to circle back to something that Aaron said about trust, and I would say that we have developed a high degree of trust amongst the eight of us, and a big part of that is Scott brought in the concept of hashtag no surprises. And that is one of the reasons why I feel like I can trust, is because I feel like there's not going to be something that I'm not prepared to talk about brought up in a meeting. And so I just wanted to put that out there, and, and we do have, we all agreed at the beginning of this year, meaning here that starts in July, to adhere to a, a, an agenda format. And in that agenda format, there is the opportunity to, you know, check the agenda, and then at the end, there's an opportunity to suggest future topics, so that it can be in public. You can suggest topics in, via email to Scott or to Jonathan, that's, that's the policy. And I don't think we can restrict people from making motions in the middle of a meeting, though, to, to change the agenda. I, I, that does seem to be following Robert's rules and orders the way I understood it.
Right.
And I also wanted to say that sometimes, I mean, another concern about, a concern that I have is responding when the topic is emotionally charged. That I, I guess, I prefer to respond when some of that emotion has had a chance to dissipate, and the rationality can rise to the top in a discussion. So that's just one other piece that I have been thinking about.
Yeah, that's a good point.
One thing that I've seen is a real benefit at times from interaction with the audience. And I'm thinking back really to some of our, our failed bond efforts when I was on the board my first go-around. And there was, you know, we'd have a room full of people, and a lot of, despite best efforts to educate and to get out accurate information, we'd get a lot of people that would come and speak, and, and they would, you know, set forth a whole litany of facts that were inaccurate. And at that time, our board chair, or one of the members on the board that was, you know, really familiar with, with those facts or circumstances, sometimes it would be the superintendent, sometimes it would be Steve Nielsen, you know, would actually respond. And I thought that was helpful, because there was such a topic of concern to the whole community. If we don't respond in those scenarios, and sometimes we can't, because we're not prepared, maybe, but when we are, I think that's our best opportunity oftentimes to set the record straight, to communicate to people that are watching and interested. And if we don't respond then, you have a room full of people, and maybe people online, that hear those purported facts as laid out, and then those become the facts.
Right.
And so I was even thinking about tonight, for example, you know, there's a, there's a, I think it's a statewide, maybe it's a nationwide, kind of conspiracy theory that school boards are masking kids in order to receive Escher dollars. You know, and that couldn't be farther from the truth, right? But we kind of heard a little bit of that tonight. And so, you know, we could have, somebody could have been prepared to respond to that, just very briefly, just again, as a way of communicating to the public. And so I guess I don't want to, and it, and it's a fine line to walk, I suppose, but I do think that that's something that we need to consider, is this public meeting and the value of communicating to the public.
Right. No, that's a really good point, too. And, and I do think, you know, one of the things that, that we try to watch out for is information that we know to be incorrect, especially if it's, if it's repeated. And one of the other challenges, though, that, that we have is sometimes there's this fine line between, you know, we, we've gotten, I don't even know how many emails, well, how come you allowed somebody to sit there and say, you know, spew disinformation, right? And that goes both sides, all sides, every side. Well, that's a real challenge when, when we're dealing with COVID, because it's not quite as straightforward as maybe those Escher dollars.
Right.
It's, you know, you can get a scientist that's going to stand up there and say all kinds of stuff. So we've really tried hard to stay out of that fray.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's not our
Definitely.
lane.
Right.
Okay. So, but I do hear what you're saying, and I think that's a really valid point. So I want to circle back, Janet, this was your requested topic. I'm not sure if this landed where you wanted it to, or if there was anything specific you wanted out of it, other than the conversation. So maybe I'll circle back to you before we move past it and make sure you're, you're where you want to be.
Yeah, no, thank you. I didn't have necessarily a desired outcome, other than to make sure that we're all clear on how we are doing this moving forward. So it seems, it seems clear that, that we will be allowing motions during the meeting outside of that agenda review time, but that it's understood as a board that we're going to try to limit that to the greatest extent possible, that that's sort of an exceptional circumstance, and that wherever possible, we want to defer to doing that at the beginning of the meeting. And I think that's, you know, that's acceptable, certainly to me. I think, I think to Erin's point, if we can trust that that is, hey, this is kind of worst-case scenario, I've got to make a motion, sorry, folks, we've got to act on this now, then, then that's, then that's fine. And then I guess the second thing is, I mean, that goes sort of hand in hand with, with the public comment, to the extent that, that then that does open that up to happen after other public comment times, is to somebody to make a motion to have that conversation. So I think that's where it gets a little slippery. It's not quite as clear what, what protocol we're trying to uphold in that situation, whether we're trying to also reduce the number of times we're going to do that, or if we're basically saying, yeah, let's, let's do this more often. Well, I don't, I don't have a sense for what the guardrails are around that question quite as clearly as the ones around the issue of, of making a motion to, to add an agenda item, if that, if that makes sense. So I'm a little fuzzy on that. That's, I mean, as, as a board, if we feel like we need to sort of, just sort of walk that path as we build it, then that's, that's fine, but, but I'm not super clear on, on what our practice will be there.
I think what I'm hearing is, let's try to be judicious, and maybe if that becomes a recurring theme problem, we have a, an agenda item at a future meeting to hammer that out. In my recollection as chair, it could have only happened once or twice, including last month. So it's not a common problem at this point, but, but I do, I, at least that's what I'm hearing. I don't know, anybody disagree with that? Okay. Yep, Jennifer?
Just one last thing, a, a request, I guess, for people who think they may ask for a change at the beginning of the meeting to the agenda, that if you can run that by Scott and Jonathan at a time, that's helpful in order to make sure that everybody knows what they're doing in the moment.
Yeah, it's absolutely helpful, but as we've stated, not necessary.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move us to 10D, which is our January work session. So this one is an open-ended request from me as chair. I am going to be flying back from DC on our scheduled date for a meeting. I will not be back in time to run that meeting.
Okay.
Now, we could continue on without it, however, Now, we could continue on without it, however, Scott has indicated that's a really important meeting, the long-range planning committee, there's a lot going on. So given that there are five Mondays in January, I'm requesting if anybody has a concern with us pushing it out one week to what would be the 31st of January. So just an open request to see if that's going to work for everybody else.
Because of that fifth Monday, it's going to give us that, we'll have three weeks between now and this session, and then we get, well, two weeks before the board meeting, which is nice. So we can have that cushion, it's not going to be back-to-back weeks.
Yeah, it would have been two weeks and then three weeks, and this way it's three weeks and then two weeks, and either way, it's not terrible.
Jonathan, I might just add that, you know, you all are going to get a really hefty report tomorrow, and it'd give you a little bit extra time to study that and ask questions and things of that nature. So it is helpful, even though it'd be serendipitous, I'm just adding that in.
Right. Anybody have any concerns if we were to move that? I just want to be, you know, careful with everybody else's time because I'm not the only one with a schedule of things that might conflict, so.
And would that, and I agree, Jonathan, will that work okay with our long-range plan? Will that be okay with our members, committee members on that change? I suppose it'll just give them a little bit more time to review the material.
Yeah, and that's right. The committee will receive the report when you do, tomorrow by the end of the day.
Very good.
So to give them a little bit more time. We've always said late January for the board work session.
Okay.
And so, and our last long-range meeting is on the 20th.
Okay.
Okay. Not hearing any objections, so I think we'll just plan on having that be the date then. It'll be moved out one week from previously scheduled. So I appreciate everybody's flexibility on that. All right, that moves us to what are 10E through 10K. Now, these are second and final readings of policy updates that we reviewed back, shoot, I want to say these were in November's work session, or am I mistaken? But anyway, the idea tonight is if anybody has anything you want to discuss, we'll discuss on any of those second or final reading items, knowing or recalling everybody that we are going to be voting on the final reading ones coming up. Everybody good? All right. So that's going to move us to our second public comment. Same rules apply, however, we are asking that you limit it to discussion and action items of tonight. And again, if you would like to speak virtually, please feel free to raise your hand. And if you'd like to speak here, come on up and you'll get your three minutes. It'd be great, actually, if you would, thank you.
Silverton, business owner here in town. I just wanted to clarify, Owen, that I wasn't, I'm just trying to get all my thoughts together. I know it's not the school board that is receiving or requesting the ESER funds. I'm just asking, I know it's the district. What I'm asking is, as a school board, you're representing our children and we voted all of you in, that you would do the research, see where the funds are, see where they're going, and make it an action item for the February agenda to, I mean, because there's no sense of putting in a complaint to the district of, you know, the mask and the mandates and everything like that, because obviously they're hearing it. But to the state officials and to the governor, to the ODE would be great. So that's all, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online? Nope. Anybody else in the room? Yeah, come on.
My name is Peggy Hart, I live in Silverton. I just, this is my third school board meeting and it's very different from teaching or being a student. There's an enormous sort of bureaucratic culture that I'm just becoming familiar with listening to you guys talk. But I think too, that it's the regulations, the network of rules and regulations that come from different authorities down to you is something I have never seen before either. And it's sort of where the rubber meets the road, to have the public see that can feel confining, because it does limit your actions, it limits our opportunities, it limits the effectiveness of our complaints when there's obstacles to our desires. And that's, I guess, called the rule of law, kind of. And it feels, when you're on the receiving end of it, it feels confining, but I've been places where that doesn't exist and I guess I would be grateful for your, the trouble you go to, to make it all work. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's definitely, we've all learned a lot since we've been on the board, I'll say that. It's a learning experience. Okay, anybody else? All right. We have really one action item, which is the approval of four final reading policy updates on the docket tonight. And at this point, I would accept a motion to adopt the four recommended changes in their final reading as stated or listed on Board Book.
I move to approve the four policies that are in their final form on Board Book.
So moved, moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on these policies? All right.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
I'll thank you all in favor.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, that was our only action item. We do have item 13, future agenda items request, so this is an opportunity to suggest something that you'd like to have included at a future meeting that we haven't already brought up or talked about.
I have a couple. Okay. So I would like in the future to discuss, and I think we touched on it, was board goals. We were probably going to save that for a work session, from what I understand, but board goals. And also, we had a wonderful report from Marina regarding Sodexo, but I'd like to take it a step further and see if we can discuss the farm to table, I think, local sourcing. How would that look? Does it, should we discuss potentially directing our superintendent to looking at a committee to work sort of as in dovetailing what we currently are doing? I would love to see that, especially with the agriculturally enriched area we live and for nutrition and health of our students. That would be my two items.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Any others? Okay. Well, without objection, meeting adjourned.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.